Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, July 25, 2022. A call this meeting to order at 6:32 PM. Let the record reflect that all councilors are present with the exception of Councilor Johnston, who has been excused this evening. With that, I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united, free, open, and sovereign.
Thank you very much. We have one item here under General, and that is recognizing the Thornton Academy baseball team. In June, the Thornton Academy Boys varsity baseball team won the Class A Maine State Championship after working hard for a 2022 playoff record of five and zero. The team was led by head coach Jason Laverrier and consisted of Brady Graff from a captain, Cody Bauker, a captain, Joshua Kapetsky, Nicholas Stinson, Braden Williams, Kyle Sawyer, Thomas Griffin, Henry Lozier, John Roner, Pavel Tarpe, Wyatt Light, Owen Critchley, Jack Cody, Mike McLeer, Jeremiah Chessy, Christian Schaefer, and Nicholas Frank. On behalf of the City Council and I, we would like to congratulate these players and their coaches for their hard work and dedication to the support. The community is very proud of you. There was another item that I wanted to get onto, the General, and that is just to read a resolution that the council passed in July of 2020, and I believe it makes perfect sense to read it into the record again. Be it resolved that the Saco City Council supports the affirming a safe, welcoming, and diverse community resolution, whereas equality, inclusion, and safety for all persons is a core value in the city of Saco, and whereas a safe community requires open communication, diverse perspectives, and foundation built on trust, and whereas we know the community succeed and achieve their best potential when all persons are welcome, and whereas we celebrate our community's diversity and welcome all who live, work, or visit here regardless of their national origin, color, religion, sexual orientation, or gender identity, race, age, disability, or financial or socioeconomic status. Now therefore, I, William Doyle, Mayor of Saco, on behalf of the City Council hereby resolve, all residents, visitors, and guests are entitled to be treated with compassion, respect, and dignity, and any individual exhibiting discriminatory behavior, overt or subtle, will not be tolerated in the city of Saco, its employees or officials in any form. The city of Saco encourages employees, board, committee members, and elected officials to identify their implicit and explicit bias to ensure the ideals of fairness and equality are upheld, and we commit to building an environment and a community in which everyone is valued, respected, and welcomed. We encourage the citizens of Saco to likewise affirm these values of inclusion. That was approved unanimously by the Saco City Council on July 20, 2020. That brings us to item five, Committee Correspondence to Council. Any Committee Correspondents this evening? Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to remind the public that this past Saturday was the first official opening of the giant book sale at the Dyer Library. It's our annual book sale and fundraiser. We had an amazing crowd that showed up that first day. Thank you to all of the volunteers who have spent the past winter sorting and organizing all of the books, setting them all up. The book sale does run through August, and it runs during regular hours of the library, and we still have a great selection, and hopefully we'll see everybody down.
Thank you very much. Any further Committee Correspondents at this time? Seeing no further Committee Correspondents this time, we'll move on to item six, which is public comment. There was nobody that signed up. If there's anybody wishing to speak to the City Council, come forward and be heard. Seeking nobody looking for recognition, moving on to item seven, Approval of the Minutes for July 11, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor McPhail, any discussion on approval of the minutes for July 11, 2022? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Minutes pass six-zero. That brings us to item eight, Consent Items. That has been asked to be removed, so we will deal with that under Action Items. So moving on to Action Items, number nine, we will hear item A, Confirm Mayor's Appointment of Andrew Bracy and Tom Hardy to the Historic Preservation Commission as regular members, and that is assigned to Counselor Gunn, and that's on page two in your packet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Historic Preservation Commission is comprised of five regular members and up to five associate members. Members' serve terms is outlined in section 230 through 413 of the city's ordinances. Mayor Doyle has recommended moving Andrew Bracy and Tom Hardy from associate members to regular members. In their current roles, Andrew and Tom have regularly attended HPC meetings and have been dedicated contributors. Elevating them to regular status allows them to vote at meetings. Both members will replace vacant seats on the commission. Mr. Bracy's term will end on June 30, 2025, and Mr. Hardy's will end on June 30, 2023. Be it ordered that the City Council confirm the mayor's appointment of Andrew Bracy and Tom Hardy as regular members of the Historic Preservation Commission, with terms expiring on June 30, 2025, and June 30, 2023 respectfully. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Counselor Gunn, do you have a discussion on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Prior to the beginning of the meeting this morning, I was contacted by Acting HPC Chair Diana Hewitt, and long and the short of it is our current chair, Stephen Ryan, is stepping as chair when his term is over this summer, but intends to stay on as a regular member. Long and the short of it, Ms. Hewitt and myself had a little arithmetic problem, and as you can see in our, as written in the commentary, we are limited to five regular members and up to five associate members. That being said, we are currently in need of just having one new regular member, and it was recommended to me by Ms. Hewitt that Andrew Bracy, being the senior of the two members, be the member that is elevated to regular status. So I would like to amend, I would like to amend this motion to eliminate Tom Hardy from the nomination. He will still remain as associate member for the time being, and to simply elevate Andrew Bracy to full membership.
Amendment's been made by Counselor Gunn to remove the name Tom Hardy from the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion on the amendment only? Counselor Archer?
Just to, as a future, if we're amending your appointment, concerned with future amendments of appointments, it's not that I want this to be the floor, as it's great, just I see an issue in the future, which the council amends your appointment, you hear what I mean? It's more for discussion with this council, we're sorry. They've set a message. So how would we proceed on this, even though I'm for exactly as Counselor Gunn proposed?
You could vote on the amendment, and then you could table the item, and then bring it back up at a different meeting.
Is there a way for you to withdraw the, I'm just, again, let's just, how do we make this work?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Gunn?
As the person assigned the commentary, would it be prudent to satisfy your concerns if I withdrew the sort of, withdrew the motion and then?
Would the outcome of all?
Yeah. Well, I will get this procedural. I mean, obviously, since both these gentlemen are associate members, and it's really more formality, but at the same time, it saves our HPC from having to promote members in the meeting for voting purposes. I mean, it would do nothing to really sort of change the course of history, so to speak. It's really more to reward them for, you know, being conscientious members, both of these gentlemen. That being said, since we're in no immediate rush, would it satisfy your concerns if I withdrew it, and then we simply resubmitted the amendment, resubmitted the motion at the next meeting with the one name on it? Would that be conceivable? I'm trying to help the situation.
So the item has been brought to the floor, has been properly seconded, it is on there, it is on there for council action. There's been an amendment. I think we need to take care of the amendment first. There is no provision that I've seen in the Rules and Order of Business or the Charter that allow me to withdraw my nomination appointments, but I do believe since they are mayoral nominations and appointments, I can withdraw. And if there's no objection of this council, I will withdraw my nominations and put forth new nominations. I'd rather do it all and come back with a clean slate. That's how I would like to handle this, if there's no objection from the council. At this time, there's no objection from the councils, so I am withdrawing the nominations for appointment. You will see new nominations at the next council meeting, which is August 8. And with that, just so that the record is cleared, Counselor Hatch, you're withdrawing your second on that item, and Counselor Gunn, you're withdrawing your motion prior to the second.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, confirm.
Thank you very much. Moving on to what was item A, now item B on page three in your packet, a final reading amendment to section 7.1 of Saco's zoning ordinance for accessory dwelling units, signed to Counselor Purdy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Saco Court Enforcement and Fire Department staff propose to amend the performance standards for accessory dwelling units of section 7.1 of Saco's zoning ordinance. These standards currently require provision of fire sprinklers in new attached ADUs. However, the state fire marshal requires fire sprinkler systems to also be provided in the existing residence where such ADUs are constructed. Staff find this all or nothing fire sprinkler requirement significantly increases the cost to construct an attached ADU, which conflicts with the city's goals of encouraging infill development and provision of housing that meets the needs of a variety of Saco residents. This amendment would revise Saco standards by eliminating the sprinkler requirement for new ADUs proposed to be attached to or constructed within existing residents that do not contain fire sprinklers. Other amendments include addition of a clearer and broader purpose statement that is tied to the comprehensive plan and provision of design guidelines for detached ADUs. Saco's planning board voted six-zero during the March 15, 2022 meeting to forward a positive recommendation to City Council for the proposed amendments. I move to approve the final reading and adopt the amendments to section 7.1 of Saco's zoning ordinance for accessory dwelling units.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote on the final reading. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Brings us to item B, a final reading contract zone agreement revision for 66 North Street, page six in your packet, assigned to Counselor Purdy.
Thank you. Adam and Deborah Miller, owners of Curl Boutique LLC, purchased the property located at 66 North Street to operate a salon with accessory office space on the first two floors and reside on the third floor, which is presently unfinished. The property previous, was previously the site of the Carriage House Salon, a day spa business which was authorized as a personal service establishment at the subject property via a 2004 contract zone agreement between the city of Saco and the previous owners, Russell and Linda Tabo. The 2004 CZA required provisions of 14 parking spaces on the premises, one space per 200 feet of salon business use, signage limited to four square feet in area, exterior lighting limited to existing plus one additional fixture, limits on hours of operation, nine-to-five Mondays, nine-to-seven Tuesdays through Fridays, and nine-to-four on Saturdays. Limits on number of employees to no more than six, limits on customers to no more than six per two-hour period. Parking agreement allowing customers of the business at the neighboring property to use the parking lot when the applicant's business is not open. Section 2.1 of the 2004 CZA specifies that the agreement is not transferable. Mr. and Mrs. Miller therefore request an amendment to the previous agreement to authorize continuation of the salon use of the property under their ownership. The Millers propose minor changes to the configuration and uses of the property. According to the application, they intend to reduce the size of the first-floor salon space from 2,758 to 2,256.75 square feet, utilize 501.25 square feet of the finished second floor as personal and office space, renovate the unfinished third floor for use as residence, install signage on an existing post and on the face of the carriage barn. No exterior changes to the site or building or changes to the conditions of approval the CZA are proposed, except for deletion of terms 2G and 2K. 2G required a parking agreement with a neighboring business, the Victorian Tea Room, which is no longer in operation. 2K required site plan approval by the planning board. Since no changes to the use or development of the property are proposed, staff find site plan review by the planning board is not warranted at this time. The planning board held a public hearing and voted five-zero to forward a positive recommendation to City Council at the June 28, 2022, planning board meeting. I move to approve the final reading and adopt the contract zone agreement revision for 66 North Street.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Archer. Any discussion? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I just wanted to take a moment to express my gratitude to City Planner Garnum. I made a recommendation that we perhaps rewrite the previous contract into current language and clean it up a little bit, and I did bilateral comparison, and you did a pretty good job of doing that, so I appreciate that effort. I also just, I wanted to express with all due respect to the applicant, I'm sure that they're going to do their best to adhere to all of the performance requirements contained within the contract, but I do want to express publicly my concerns about contract zones and our potential inability to monitor and follow up on things, just for the record. But I'm happy to support this contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. That brings us to item C, or what was item C, now item D, and that is final reading, budget amendment number one, Buxton Road sewer force main project, assigned to Counselor McPhail on page 11 in your packet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city currently owns and maintains a forced main along Buxton Road that runs under the main turnpike. With the work required for the main turnpike's project, this forced main will need to be approximately case to handle the weight and impact of additional cars driving over it. Today, the cost estimate is $250,000, but please keep in mind that costs for labor and materials are increasing daily. Be it ordered that the City Council approves the second and final reading of budget amendment number one fiscal year 2023.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhit?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Excuse me. That brings us to what was item D, now item E, page 13 in your packet, a first reading charter amendment number one, Office of the Mayor, and that is Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council endeavors to make a few amendments to the charter. As described in MRSA Title 30A, Chapter 111, Section 2104, the process for making amendments to the charter requires a public hearing before a vote by council. Additionally, if approved by the council, the item would be voted in referendum by the public in November. This amendment provides the mayor with a ceremonial office in City Hall to be used for official city business. Be it ordered that the City Council approve the first reading of the charter amendments included in the document titled Saco City Charter Amendment Number One, Office of the Mayor, and further move to schedule a public hearing for August 8, 2022, before a vote to add to the November referendum. This amendment, if approved by the voters, would have an effective date of January 1, 2023.
Motion's been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Recognizing that the historical issues that gave rise to this charter amendment had nothing to do with anybody presently in the position of mayor, I thought about this since our last meeting. I just find it a little disconcerting that resolving a previous, what I would classify as what looked like a childlike disagreement between a former mayor and a former city administrator about having a physical space allowing the mayor to engage in private discussions with constituents rises to the level of a city charter amendment. It's my understanding that when the mayor currently needs access to a private conference area, such an area is provided, providing a dedicated office area for the mayor's use with limited usable vacant space currently available at City Hall seems like a useless exercise to me. Mandating it in the city charter adds a level of foolishness to the mix. Furthermore, I'm also concerned, as was mentioned by Counselor Johnston at our last council meeting, about the public optics of having an office for the mayor at City Hall under our current city charter. Article II, Section 2 dash, I'm sorry, 2.04, which is labeled limitations mayor and council, interference with administration, reads as follows, and I quote, "Except for the purpose of inquiries, the mayor, the city council, or any of its members shall deal with city officers and employees who are subject to the direction and supervision of the city administrator solely through the city administrator. The mayor, the city council, or any of its members shall not give orders to any such officers or employees either publicly or privately. A dedicated office at City Hall affords the mayor the ability to give direct orders to any officers or employee either publicly or privately." to any officers or employee either publicly or privately. Real or imagined, this would seem to jeopardize the transparency of a mayor's role, the mayor's role as it should be. In my view, this provides a real danger of violating Article two, section two point oh four of the city charter. So consequently, I will not be supporting this charter amendment as I feel it provides potentially counterproductive value to the efficient and appropriate management of city affairs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try not to take the use of the term foolish personally there, Counselor Hatch, but it's okay. I understand a difference of opinion. As I stated last week, the reason, yes, the reason I submitted this was in due part to this sort of unwritten rule that has become the norm in the city based on a unfortunate and you could say immature fight between a former city administrator and a former mayor. The fact that I want to codify something and I've, you know, I have acquiesced to what city solicitor Murphy thought was a prudent suggestion in terms of language, in terms of ceremonial, and the language provided by staff here covers all the basis. The basis are simple. It removes the personalities involved, so there's never going to be a, if this thing were to pass, my hope would be there would never be a situation where a mayor would be so presumptive as to demand office space, or a city administrator would also be so presumptive as to sort of not give space, or in order to make a political point, move staff around to sort of make the mayor seem like the bad guy or the bad girl, as the case may be. As you can see by what I've, you know, what I have put forward and the staff has sort of perfected, if the mayor would desire to have office space to meet constituents, they can ask the city administrator, and the city administrator says, okay, but because I govern the staff and I govern the day-to-day operations of City Hall, you can have either this office over here, or if we got some room in a room closet for you, we'll give you some office space, but we're not asking for anything in particularly ornate or large or anything that would, anything that a reasonable person would think is a rival source of power. And I must point out that contrary to, well, despite the charter amendments going on up in the city of Portland, the city of Portland, the city of Bedford have essentially the same form of government that we have. A little bit more of a firewall between council and staff as opposed to what we have, a little bit more of a collaborative system as designed by the charter, but our friends up in Portland and our friends up down across the river, their mayors have offices. Mayor Cassavant has a very nice office, from what I've been told. Last time I checked, I don't think anyone in the city of Bedford really doubts that city manager Jim Beddett runs a tight ship over there, and I seriously doubt that that type of problem would come into play here, if anything, by codifying it, though it makes it perfectly clear that it is a ceremonial office, that the mayor has the right to meet constituents without having to sort of rely on a time and a place to basically play musical chairs in the city, in the city hall. I mean, we have a mayor for a reason. Mayor is the contact person for the city. The mayor represents the city. The mayor is the head of city. If a constituent wants, I'll, we'll put a perfect example out. The mayor has open office hours once a month, and he holds them right over in this area. Now, this, unlike several months, which I must find comical because so many people accuse the mayor of being not the, you know, not transparent when he invites people to come down once a month, so, so it's might be on the people who confuse him of being non-transparent to actually come down to City Hall and actually say what's on their mind. We had a nice situation the last meeting where I believe four people showed up, each to have been the mayors of the year on some issues, and people had, you know, sat on the side and, you know, waited their turn, but, you know, if I was someone who didn't know a thing about city government, I want to come down to speak to my mayor. If it was a sensitive issue, if it was an issue that I didn't want to broadcast to the city or anybody else, I mean, we're a small town. Word gets out on some things that people may not want to hear about, you know. I like knowing that the mayor can say, well, I've got an office in the back here, let's sit down, we'll discuss your issue, and your anonymity is protected. I think that's not a hard or egregious ask for a city that has a mayor for a reason to have, and that's my main point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was confused last time we discussed this, and I remain a little bit confused now about why a physical space would imply additional powers. The charter is clear on the powers and duties of the mayor, as well as the powers and duties of council, and how the mayor and council should interact with staff, and it makes no sense to me that providing a physical space would interfere with those duties or imply additional powers, and because of that, I have no problem supporting this amendment.
Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will ditto Counselor Berman and actually to Counselor Gunn on some of the points taken. Specifically, like, one of the ancillary services that a mayor provides is an ambassador to the community, ambassador to other communities, and it's, to me, it's always been quite strange that any mayor that we've had has had to ask permission to find a space and to, and for me, that's not how I see a mayor, a CEO of a company, a executive director of an agency. That's not traditional, so I'm actually for this amendment, this proposal. The only thing I'd want is to get rid of the, not currently, I don't see an issue, but in the future, if there's ever a mayor-administrator butting heads like they did in Portland, that we just define one physical location, and that will always be the office of the mayor. That would be my one tweak, is that rather than saying at a location determined by the city administrator, I don't see this relationship being an issue now, but I want to protect the future, as I usually do. If we just determine one location, and that would always be the physical location of the office of the mayor. I have been in the Bedford mayor's office, and yes, and it's been permanent. I don't know how long it's been there, but it doesn't move around. I also think that by not moving it around, it will, it would create confusion if the mayor's office changed with every mayor. If it was in the ba, not the basement, but if it was downstairs, upstairs, third floor, if it kept moving around, I see that as a disservice to those who are active in our community for many years. So for me, I would just add, identify a physical location in perpetuity, but I don't have the concerns. Counselor Hatch mentioned, like, dictating. I mean, I think a mayor could just walk in and dictate if they chose to those concerns, and I don't see it happen too often, but having a physical location, I don't see a difference between having a physical location and not having a physical location under those concerns that would present it. So that's my take right now.
Any further discussion? And just as a reminder, you're only approving this as a charter amendment. It still has to go to the voters for final approval, and so that would be in November. The ultimate decision rests with the voters. Any further discussion on this item? Counselor Purdy, then Counselor Gunn. Counselor Purdy?
Thank you. Yeah, I don't want to repeat everything that's been said by Councilors Gunn, Berman, and Archer. I'd just simply be, simply be willing to push this forward, and at the very least, get through, go through a public hearing and see what the public may have to say, and if it passes, council, will the voters make the decision. Thank you.
Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I wanted to touch on what Counselor Archer said. I mean, I suppose, you know, realistically, it would make sense that the mayor have an office in a permanent place, and I think, you know, that would, as you, like you said, in relation to the fiasco up in Portland a couple of years ago between, I'm forgetting who, John Jennings and Ethan Stramling, though, that would not happen down here. Of course, I like to think Saco being a smaller city, we have a little more of a congenial sort of, you know, we get on better. Let's just say that. The reason I worded it in the way that I did was to Counselor Hatch's point, and the point that's been raised before about, I mean, that the, about, you know, space being at a premium, and I always wanted to have the city administrator in a position to say, you know, look, if a mayor chooses to have the space, it's just, it's going to be in a place where it's convenient, and I thought that would be a nice sort of compromise to get people who may not be overly enthusiastic about the idea to sort of support it. That was my intention, but if it doesn't, then so be it. I'm prepared to just sort of leave the amendment as is, in the hopes that it will attract more support, not only from this council to get it to the voters, but from the voters themselves, though. To Counselor Purdy's point, the reason I'm proposing this way is so the, you know, the voters of Saco can decide, should their mayor have an office where we can meet him, or are they okay just sort of, you know, meeting the mayor, wherever. I mean, that way, we're not leaving this up to a simple sort of change or order of business, because order of businesses can be changed based on the personalities involved, and given the history behind this situation, I figure this is a nice way to sort of take all the personalities out, and in fact, as I originally proposed the amendment, it was specifically clear that the amendment would not take effect until after the next mayoral election, though, to sort of remove any doubt that I was sort of trying to get Mayor Doyle in office, though, when the mayor's been the mayor for three years and functioning quite well without one. So if that is a legal reason, and I guess I pose this question to city administrator Canrath, that if it's a legal reason, there has to be, you know, this election that takes effect. I have no problem with it, though, and like I said, I don't think this mayor is in a real hurry to utilize office space anyway, so it's really more of an academic question, but that's it.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion on this item, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
No.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Motion passes five one. That brings us to what was item E, now item F, a first reading on page fifteen in your packet, charter amendment number two, powers and duties of the mayor. It was assigned to Counselor Johnston, who brought up the amendment, but reading in is Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. The city council endeavors to make a few amendments to the charter, as described in MRSA Title Thirty-A, Chapter One-Eleven, Section Twenty-One-O-Four. The process for making amendments to the charter requires a public hearing before a vote by council. Additionally, if approved by the council, the item would be voted in referendum by the public in November. Be it ordered that the city council approve the first reading of the charter amendment included in the document titled Saco City Charter Amendment Number Two, Powers and Duties of the Mayor, dated July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, and further move to schedule a public hearing for August eighth, two thousand twenty-two, before a vote to add to the November referendum. This amendment, if approved by the voters, would have an effective date of January first, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Archer. Any discussion on this amendment? City Administrator Canrath, did we have the, we do, okay, thank you. Counselor Berman?
I have two types of comments on this. First, the motion is to adopt the document titled Saco City Charter Amendment Number Two, Power and Duties of the Mayor, dated July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, but in fact, we have two different set of changes under that document, so it would be helpful to guide our discussion a little bit more as to which one we're considering. Second, both charter amendments have a feature in common. They both add an all other appointed positions to the first sentence. I think that's a useful addition and fills in a gap that's not currently there. They also have a feature in common where after the second sentence, they add, if a mayor's appointment fails to be confirmed by the majority of council or the city council, council then should proceed to fulfill the vacancy. To me, this sentence is redundant. That power is already granted to council by the prior sentence, which reads, if an appointment has not been made and confirmed, that's an and, within thirty days from the date of the vacancy, the council shall then proceed to fill the vacancy. Thus, if an appointment has not been made and confirmed, if it fails to be confirmed, within thirty days, the council then proceeds to fill the vacancy. That seems to be the exact power the additions or the amendments are seeking to grant council. I recognize that the council may not have availed itself of that power with some appointments, and/or our procedures for enacting that power may be lacking, but I don't think that sentence helps us get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Berman, I think if we look down at page sixteen, all the way to the bottom, there should be some blue text that was Counselor Hatch's amendment to Counselor Johnston's initial charter amendment, and I think Counselor Hatch provided the, provided the language so that the executive assistant could prepare it and put it into the, into the packet for you. So that is the, if somebody's willing to make that amendment, you can change the current motion, which is Counselor Johnston's.
So the current motion on the table is the first paragraph, and with an amendment, we may add the text from the second paragraph? Is that your understanding?
That is my understanding of what's transpired.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And again, I'll say it, I said it last, charter amendment, whatever you do obviously goes out to the voters, and the voters have the last say as this is a charter amendment. So any further discussion on this item? Counselor Hatch, do you want to make an amendment?
Yes, I'd be happy to put forth an amendment to insert the text that was provided in the packet, and I can read it into the record if you would like.
That would be great.
Okay. I would make an amendment to the motion to insert the following text in the position in the paragraph where it's indicated that the mayor shall be provided the opportunity to appoint an alternative candidate within the thirty days subsequent to the aforementioned failed appointment. If an appointment of an alternate candidate has not been made and confirmed within thirty days from the date of the aforementioned failed appointment, then the original paragraph continues.
Amendment's been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second? On the amendment only?
Second.
Second on the amendment only was Counselor McPhail. Any discussion on the amendment only? The amendment only is the blue language that says above it, proposed text insertion above. That is the blue language at the bottom of page sixteen. Counselor Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm beginning to fear that I'll sound like a broken record. I believe the blue language is necessary in order to clarify that the mayor has a full thirty days in order to make and have an appointment confirmed, even if there's a no vote within that period. So the blue language is only necessary if we enact the red language, both of which then become redundant with the sentence prior, I believe. So I will be voting yes for this amendment, but I believe then both sentences become redundant with the prior sentence, and don't think we need it either.
Thank you, Counselor Berman. Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to Counselor Berman's point, I definitely support the spirit of the proposed language by Counselor Hatch, and I am for it for the amendment purposes. However, once we get, if we do pass that amendment and we have the full text in front of us, it definitely, I think it could be tightened up a little bit to avoid, as Counselor Berman said, some of the redundancies involved, though, because, I mean, if the amendment passes, though, it basically codifies that the mayor has two shots at an appointment within thirty days, which as of right now, there, right now, I mean, as far as I know, the charter is silent on the issue in the sense of that a mayor could, in theory, put forward a candidate, I guess, every week until the month is over, but it's never really happened, though. Mayors, by their usual method of operation, sort of wait towards the end and then put one candidate out, so the mayors, by their own sort of unwritten rules of sort of, in the last several years, have offered only just one candidate to the council. I think by codifying that there's two, you know, the mayor will have a second shot at it, if they cannot get a consensus on the first one, I think is a prudent way and also a way of protecting the mayor's
a way of protecting the mayor's appointment authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gunn. And Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Gunn had brought up, I didn't see this as a two-time thing. I thought this was in perpetuity. The mayor puts someone, it's denied, 30 days, puts one, if that's denied, it would then kick in again. It would go, I didn't see it as a two-time stop, and I don't believe it should be a two-time stop. If you have a council that, again, I'm not saying it's now, but I'm just trying to protect the future, is if there's conflict between a council and a mayor, a majority of a council and a mayor, then they could just deny two and then pick their own. And that's not the spirit of the charter with the mayor's power of an appointment. So I believe it should be in perpetu... It would just keep going until that 30 days would just restart after every failed appointment. Because again, I wouldn't want, I just wouldn't want it to be, okay, we'll just deny the next two, and then we'll pick our own, the council itself. And I see that this could, if we stop it, create that issue. I'd rather just have it restart, and maybe our city attorney can provide that language of some sort of perpetuity, oh, again, 30 days, again, 30 days, something cleaner than, again, this is just the first reading, so this is where we do these problem solvings. But I wouldn't want it to be one, two, done. I have a concern against, to protect the powers of the mayor, to be honest, in the way that charter is written currently.
Thank you. Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I found Counselor Archer's comments very useful. I had assumed that the 30 days was the same 30 days as the original appointment, but I can see with a closer read and having the benefit of Counselor Archer's comments, that actually it does read like it's in perpetuity, right? If an appointment, "The mayor shall be provided with the opportunity to appoint an alternative candidate within 30 days subsequent to the aforementioned failed appointment." That suggests that a failed appointment, right, then triggers a 30 days to make another appointment. And if the appointment of the alternative candidate has not been made and confirmed within 30 days, then council takes over. But it does read to me like every failed appointment would trigger 30 days to make another appointment. And if that's the case, then this indeed does protect the mayor's powers better than the original language and provides an important advance that I can fully support.
Any further discussion on this? Jody, can you take the mic?
Madam Deputy Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for the opportunity. I just want to speak on this because I think folks are under the impression that there's a ton of people with applications in and pounding down the door to be on these boards and committees. So I ask you, when you look at these charter amendments, especially this one, and ask yourself why this is being brought forward after years and years and years of the status quo working properly. And again, as I pointed out in the last council meeting, there's already language that allows the City Council to fill a vacancy. Now, should we clarify how that's done in the rules and order of business come the end of this year and when the new council is seated? I absolutely 100% support that. But in this situation, sometimes there's no person that's sitting there waiting to be filled. So the 30 days, I mean, one, it's not a whole lot of time to fill it, and then, two, you might not have any candidates, and the perfect example is the Intercultural Incompetency Awareness Committee. I've only been able to get six folks onto that committee, they still haven't met, and that's because there's not a ton of people, you know, knocking on the door to be on that committee. And that's unfortunate, but that is the, that is where we are. So I just ask that when you look at these, and this isn't for me, this is for, you know, all mayors, as we look towards the future, just be kind with the language, because again, there's not a ton of people looking to be on boards and committees. And for those members of the public, if you are interested in being on boards and committees, please go to the City Council webpage, and there's a board and application area, and please submit your board application, because we'd love to have here volunteer service to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion on the amendment, on the amendment only, roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
The amendment passes 6-0. That brings us to the main, the main item now amended. Any further amendments? Seeing no further amendments on the main motion as amended, roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
No.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Berman?
No.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
No.
The main motion, Charter Amendment Number Two, fails. That is 4-2. That concludes the action items for this evening. Under item 10, there is no new business, so we'll move on to item 11, Administrative Updates. City Administrator Canrath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of quick updates. Nomination petitions are available in the City Clerk's office beginning August 1st. 35 signatures are required, and those are due back no later than September 9th to be placed on the ballot for election this year. Upcoming agenda for the month of August, we'll have charter amendments, public hearing and final reading. We'll have a presentation from Bedford Cycle Old Orchard Transit from Chad Hyde, the new executive director there. Young school permit fees, discussion there, Department, Finance Department annual write-offs, Ocean Greens Drive, a street acceptance, and we'll also have consideration of some ordinance language surrounding these solar arrays issues you heard about a few weeks back. An update on the Army Corps Camp Bellas project. The Army Corps of Engineers has responded to Senator Collins' latest letter in inquiry on the status of the calculation of a local cost share for the project and the drafting of the project partnership agreement. ACO Headquarters has determined, after a bit of time calculating, has determined that the non-federal cost share for the Section 111 project's implementation to be 2.394%, which would equal, for us, $660,000 based on current, its current project cost estimates. They're currently working with Headquarters now and hopefully in the final stages of drafting a project partnership agreement to share with us so that we can then begin consideration of that. There may also be, and we're going to give a final word on this, may also be another letter of support needed from the city to the Army Corps accepting the current local share estimate of the project cost. So more to come on that, but I'd like to thank our congressional delegation also for all the work they've put in. The mayor and I had a meeting with them today to talk about next steps forward, and I'd just like to again thank all three of them, Congressman Pingree, Senators Collins and King, for their efforts in helping us through this process. We have made it further along than we have ever, so let's hope the momentum continues. Lastly, I have my city administrators' open office hours here on the Second and Fourth City Hall tomorrow from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., and look forward to seeing all residents and local business owners that choose to participate here tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for City Administrator Canrath? Seeing no questions, moving on to item 12, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment this evening? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a statement I'd like to read, so I'm putting it in a text here, so I won't waste the council's time with redundancy. Following our last meeting, there were a couple of points I feel the need to clarify for the record concerning my proposed charter amendment that would have, if passed by the council and voters, made the mayor the official chair of the school board. It was suggested during public comment, the public comment portion of the evening by School Board Chair LaFortune, School Board Member Preble, that I was, quote, "playing politics," otherwise not being transparent in my actions towards my goal. I will admit that I did not reach out to Chair LaFortune, and for that, I was in error. However, in the weeks leading up to my submission, I did reach out to several folks, including the mayor and at least two counselors. As they can attest, I was interested in feedback as I was undecided about which change to submit. As I mentioned in the debate of two weeks ago, those other choices were to either restore the school board chair to full authority as presiding officer or to retain all seven school board members and create an elected school board chair that is analogous to the mayor. In other words, as the mayor, you know, elected by everybody else, so would the school board be elected for them. In my discussions, I also reached out to three members of the school board. One of those members happened to be School Board Member Preble. To that end, I found her comments last meeting in support of Chair LaFortune to be especially erroneous. The reason I bring this up is because it is indicative of just how the poisonous style of politics is starting to seep down from the federal and state level right here into our hometown. Those school board members were upset, having convinced themselves that this was some sort of bad faith, power play on my part. Here's the thing, no votes were to be taken last time. We were simply having a discussion, basically new business, essentially a workshop. I was here a half hour before the meeting started. Those members and School Board Member Richard came in not long after. Folks from the public who have never met us before often get here early to talk to their counselor or to the mayor. Some are calm, some others can be less than calm, but nevertheless, we are here to listen. Any one of those school board members could have taken me aside to talk to me beforehand. We could have had a respectful conversation, exchanged our points of view. Instead, they decided to publicly attack my intentions. I feel necessary to point out that I have gone out of my way to stay out of the school board, the school board's affairs, especially as it relates to school construction. I would also like to remind the school board that this council, by its own volition, voted a charter amendment not long ago to eliminate the call centers. We enhance the power of the school board to make the financial decisions as it sees fit without council interference. That's hardly what I think anyone would consider a move of this body to curb the authority at the school board. As I stated last week, it was my intent to simplify the structure of the school board. That is all. Given that there was no support for my preferred idea, I withdrew the amendment. As I have gotten pushback about my other options, I've decided not to forward any proposed amendments about the relationship between the city and the school board at this time. However, I do consider discussion to have begun. I intend on revisiting it at some point down the road. I look forward to hearing from folks who are interested in being part of that constructive and hopefully open-minded discussion. Council, mayor, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further council discussion and comment? Seeing no further council discussion and comment, move on to item 13. Is there a motion to enter into executive session? Counselor McPhail?
Be it ordered that the City Council enter into an executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6, consultation with legal counsel.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion on entering executive session? Roll call vote to enter into executive session, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 to enter into executive session. Will be downstairs in the conference room. Downstairs in the conference room, we'll take a five-minute recess before that, so please be in the conference room by 7:35. Please be in the conference room by 7:35. Please be in the conference room by 7:35.
Okay, eight o'clock, we're coming out of executive session. Is our motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion on exiting executive session? Roll call, vote to exit executive session. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. That brings us to item fourteen, report from executive session. There's no report this evening. Brings us to item fifteen. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Counselor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion? Hand vote to adjourn. All in favor? Unanimous, six zero to adjourn at eight zero one PM. Have a wonderful evening everyone.